... minutes, approve the whole of 214, 2011.
So hold on.
Uh, good morning to James, second of Mr. Alex's discussion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see if we can approve the agenda and the agenda. We've got Mr. Anderson, second of Mr. Richards. Uh, I'd like to remove one item under policy, the nine page, the last page of the blue, number thirty-six, please, remove that. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Hold in participation, Mr. Tom Ward. Please step up the mic.
Thank you. About the high-speed trains, I've ridden on them and they're great, they're a good way to get around, but we got a fairly full agenda tonight and I'll be very grief. We can't afford it, that's all there is to it. You probably noticed what's happened in the last few days with over fourteen trillion dollars in national debt. Uh, I don't think, now, once we get the debt taken care of, if that ever happens, I'm all in favor of it, but not right now. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Thompson.
The last time I was in this room, the LRMPs, one for forty, maximum two, was voted down. Now, I'm hearing that John Hall and Mr. Eric Thorislund want to bring it back. A few months ago, I gave you guys a notice of misprision, which basically stated that the Department of Zoning, as well as the City of Urbana and City of Champaign, were signatories to ICLE, which is an organization known as International Council on Local Environmental Initiatives, which is a foreign NGO, and in their charter, it states, "They do not believe in property rights." And in their charter, there's three concentric circles, one is called "social justice." This LRMP, the entire thing needs to be thrown out, there's no reason to go over it again. I've made it very clear, and I know I can't ask you any questions, but I'm going to ask the Republicans in here to ask sometime tonight whether or not, find out who has read what I've handed out in concerns to UN Agenda 21. I gave you guys some documentation that laid it out quite clearly. I want to know who's doing their due diligence here. On the internet right now, this thing called UN Agenda 21 is exploding. It's gone viral because people are finding out what it's all about, and it is out to strip the property rights of Americans, being done so locally, county by county, city by city. Ignorance is no longer an excuse, I've made it very clear. The Recorder of Deeds has that notice of misprision, and you folks need to take it extremely seriously. Now, that's in regards to LRMP. You understand, it's a UN agenda. The UN does not believe in property rights. They believe in controlling the people. It is not a republic, it is a socialist slash communist framework that they work towards. And this high-speed train falls right into their agenda because it's about controlling people. The gentleman who spoke before me is absolutely right, there is no logical way you could ever want to get behind this, given the economic situation this nation is in. You just cannot vote for a high-speed train or put your signature on it, especially if you do your due diligence and read what I've talked about. And lastly, everything that's going on in this country is being done on a local level, other than the stuff that's coming top-down out of DC. You guys vote to spend money, but the fact is, the same people are making the same mistakes in every town in America, saying, "We need our piece of the federal budget." And when you've got how many thousands of towns the size of Champaign, who all say, "Yeah, we'll take this federal money," don't you understand it's coming out of our back pockets, every bit of it? You've got to have the guts to say, "No, we're not going to take it." We understand the big picture. Yeah, you want your piece, but it's coming out of our own back pocket, and that's your job. You've got to have the guts to say, "No, we're not taking the federal money," because it's not federal money. I hope you understand where I'm coming from, I hope you do your due diligence, and I hope the Republicans in here, somebody has the guts to find out who's doing their due diligence in regards to UN Agenda 21. And I know it was turned down, Stephanie made the comment that, "It's too complicated, I can't understand it." Well, that's not an excuse, because it's actually extremely easy to understand, and if they come back and say, "This is how simple it is," understand me, it's bad. You don't want to vote for it. Thank you.
Is there any other poll participation? Say Tom will close that. Any indications or nothing from the board? All right. Uh, we'll go on to the areas, county facilities. Mr. Bets.
We have the Centers Director, we've had the fiscal, we have three reports that we should have. Any questions, comments? Any motion to be seen and placed on five?
Don't move. Second.
With Jay second, by Langton, discussion. All those in favor, speak up, I'm placing a aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the same. Motion carries the Energy Lighting Redford Project update.
On page twenty-three of your agenda, I have supplied you the spreadsheet showing where we are at with the funding from the EECBG administered through the Regional Planning Commission. We are about, received about fifty thousand dollars, out of the allocated sixty thousand, we are right at ninety, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent complete, and we should be finishing up this month.
Any questions, comments? The courthouse phenyl update, my favorite subject. If you have that update.
Certainly. Uh, through the last two months, there has been still multiple correspondence between all parties involved, all five different people involved with repair of the phenyl. Today, we just received notice that our insurance company has sent out letters with a deadline date of the eighteenth of this month, to either have them move forward, or we're going to send it on to a local firm, have it repaired, and then we'll have it placed back on the clock, clock tower. So, the repair, if it's done after the eighteenth, should take six to eight weeks, so sometime in October, hopefully, we'll have it back up on top of the court tower.
And the cost?
Um, at this point in time, our insurance company's still working on that. The original estimate of total repair cost was somewhere around twenty thousand dollars, but, uh, he, once again, like I said, the insurance company is supposedly taking care of that.
Mr. Langton, quickly, you have a question.
I would just, he did say forty thousand, I think he said twenty. Twenty thousand.
Any other questions? The Arco Construction project?
That is an update of all of the projects we have been working on through the, including the extra projects that we've added to it. We were supposed to have a update, uh, and information tonight from Birch Clancy Associates for the Stormwater Management Program, well, I guess that's on, uh, maybe the next item, but, um, the building is all complete, checked with the City of Urbana, uh, all documents, everything is fine, and we should be receiving our occupancy permit from the City of Urbana, so it is complete, with the exception of the, uh, the corn or the autopsy sick, which we expect to be delivered this week or next.
Questions? Um, how do we, this Stormwater, this is a question, I think, to some degree, in the direction of share?
I expect to hear from Birch Clancy this week. One of their principals working for on this project, Chris Billings, has been on vacation this last week, we did not get an update for today, to give you tonight, so, uh, we would expect to have the presentation at the next County Committee of the Hall.
You have a business? There's no action, I think, so we have to do it. Thank you.
Next is Finance, Mr. Medenzi.
First, the first item from Finance is a report from our outside auditor, and I can report here to report for us. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hope Wheeler, I'm with Clifton Gunderson, I'm a, just a little background on me, since I haven't been in front of you before. I'm a partner with the office here in Champaign, I've been with the firm about twenty years, native of Mohammed, so I've been around Champaign County my entire life, and actually worked on the audit fifteen years ago, I think, and saw a lot of familiar faces, so it was fun to do that. I am going to run through just a brief overview of the audit and how it went, and some of the figures of the audit. It's going to be a very summarized fashion, I think you've all had access to the audit out of the website, and as you know, it's a three-hundred-page document, so I can't go through it in great detail, so I'm just going to hit on a couple of the highlights from my opinion, if you have a question, feel free to interrupt me and I can try to address your question. Um, just to explain the timeline of the audit a little bit, we started the audit by meeting with Tony in the Auditor's Office back in October of 2010, and then we spent the month of November doing the planning that we're required to do to meet our auditing standards. We started then in December and January, actually going out to different departments and getting some of the individualized department work done, such as the Collector's Office, the Circuit Clerk's Office, Court Services, and the County Clerk. We also then in January started out at the nursing home, and then completed their work, their audit process in March. In January, at the end of January, we began what's called our internal control work. That was primarily with the Auditor's Office and with Deb's Administrative Services Office. It took some time this year, and they would vouch for that, that it was, we had some pains just with being new auditors, we had to gain an understanding of all of the systems, and that took some time and a lot of answering questions and completing forms, but I will say that cooperation from everyone was great, and we, we got our understanding of the system, selected samples, and walked through transactions, numerous transactions of your accounts payable expenditures and your payroll transactions, to see that we saw proper internal controls in place, so that you had the checks and balances in place to, to prevent errors or irregularities from occurring. Happy to report, we didn't have any exceptions in any of that testing. Then in March, we went back to the Auditor's Office to start the main part of the field work. Can you hear me okay? And we spent several weeks there, and they got to know us better than I think they wanted to, but it went well there, they were very prepared for us, and were great at answering our questions and giving us their attention while we were there, and we got through then the main audit of your trial balances. The good news result out of that is, a lot of times at that point in time, we'll have found corrections that need to be made, we don't have any, we didn't propose any audit adjustments in this process, there was nothing of significance that we found that was, was Then in April, we went to the Regional Planning Commission Office, and then a few other offices to do the audit of the federal funding. This is what's called a single audit, since you have over, the requirement's only over five hundred thousand, if you have over five hundred thousand of federal funds, you have to have this special single audit. You had, for fiscal year November thirty, 2010, fourteen million dollars in federal expenditures, so we go through a process of selecting what grants to test, and in that, it's generally the larger ones, but you do have to work in some other ones, and what are considered higher-risk grants. We selected five major programs to test for our requirements and, and worked on those. That, once again, took a lot of cooperation of Regional Planning Commission, Access Initiative, and we got through those. Once again, it was some growing pains with the, not growing pains, but it was a little tough the first year, answering a lot of questions they hadn't been asked necessarily before. Some of the grants were new, so they hadn't been through this, including Access Initiative, but we got through that very well, too, with, we had a few minor recommendations there, and then there is one finding that I will report on that section here in a moment. Then, that took us through April, then in June, is when we were receiving the financial statements, so that three-hundred-page document that has the financial statement audit in it, that's when we received that and started auditing, we have to trace out and review all of those numbers to make sure they're, they're accurate compared with the, what we audited while we're in the field. So then, as you know, this got issued in early July then. Our opinion is within that document, it's around page twenty, I don't have the exact number, and that opinion is what's called a unqualified opinion, which means we did not find any material or any significant exceptions in, in those audited financial statements. That is, you don't have a copy of that because it is so, so large. Also, within that report, I would tell you, if you go out and look at it online, I'll reference another couple of page numbers, page thirty-three is a page you might look at, that's really the most summarized page in the document, that shows for the county as a whole, what your total net assets were for the year. I did jot down those numbers, net assets did increase prior year audit, they were seventy-seven million, they increased at the end of this year's audit to eighty-one million, so about a four, five million dollar increase there. The other page I wanted to point out to you, there's page thirty-nine, those of you that have spent time in it, that's probably the page you've already looked at, that shows by fund, for the major funds, larger funds, the budget to actual comparison. And this would reflect, same as some documents you would have seen back when you got monthly financials, because we didn't propose any adjustments, but there, I'd focus on the general fund in, in this summary to you, and that you would see that the revenues for the fiscal year were slightly below budget, less than a million dollars, then, but then the expenditures were also below budget by close to a million dollars, so they were controlled, and while you'd budgeted a net deficit prior to transfers of about a million dollars, you, you were within ninety thousand dollars to the good of, of what you'd budgeted. And then with the transfers in, you ended up with a net increase in the general fund, fund balance for the fiscal year. A couple of other highlights within that audit document, there are two other reports that we issue, they are the internal control reports. So, the internal, internal control work that I mentioned, where we didn't have any specific findings on our individual testing, there were, there was one finding we needed to address in this report, there are three levels of findings, which I won't go into all the details, this was a moderate level, and that was, there was, in the Circuit Clerk's Office, there was a bank reconciliations being performed, but there was not a review process for them, we felt like that generates a slight level of risk, so we recommended that those start being reviewed by someone other than the person that's preparing them, because that person has a lot of duties, and a lot of access to accounting information. So, that actually has, we've been told that process has already started occurring immediately, when, when we mentioned it back in December, they started reviewing those bank reconciliations on a monthly basis, and signing off and documenting that review. The second report in there is a report over that federal funding audit work that we performed. There, we had one internal control and compliance finding, and that was related to the Access Initiative grant and cash management. There are special federal requirements in regards to how much cash, of the federal cash you can have on hand, you're only supposed to have on hand enough to, that you need for the upcoming short term. They ended up with larger balances of cash on hand. If you read through that finding, you'll see that a lot of it was out of their control, and that the state was just sending, this, this goes through the state, and the state was just sending money to them, didn't necessarily want to send it back because you didn't need it yet, and so I know they are working with the state the best they can on getting that arranged, and it's now actually already changed, if I'm right, Tracy, to a reimbursement basis, so that, that cash balance has, has dropped down now since year end. So both of those reports had those findings mentioned, but they were still unqualified reports, still clean opinions. Overall, the, the quality controls are there and they are effective. You have two other reports that we issued in front of you tonight, they're much smaller and manageable. The top one, I believe, that you have is called the Audit Committee Letter, that's a few pages long. This letter is something that, a letter that we issue each year to the committee that functions like an audit committee, that's in, in charge of the audit process, responsible for it. So this, are predefined, every, every bold item you see there is what the accounting standard setters say, hey, this is what the Audit Committee or Finance Committee is interested in knowing about the audit. I'm not going to read through each of these, and it talks about our responsibilities. If, if there are changes in accounting policies, we want to make sure you're aware of those, we'd report those here, we weren't aware of any changes in accounting policies that of significance that would affect the financial statement comparability from year to year. If there were significant estimates, we'd report those here. In accounting, there, there are estimates, you do have some estimates, including things like workers' comp liabilities, none of yours were significant enough, we thought we had to detail them here. If there were difficulties encountered in performing the audit with, with the different departments and the people that we work with through the audit, we'd report that here, so you, as the Finance Committee, would be aware of that. We did not encounter significant difficulties, in fact, I'll mention again, it, it was a difficult process getting us all the information we needed in this first year, and everyone was cooperative, in fact, I would say, essentially, everyone was really looking for feedback, looking for recommendations, and so we appreciated that and everyone's interest, and I wanted to make sure you, you knew that I was getting that from your department heads and your different departments. If we had correcting entries, they would be attached to this letter, we didn't have any, and, any disagreements with management, we would report here in this letter. So a lot of this letter is saying, hey, everything went okay. Then the last letter issued is what's called the Management Letter, and that had, I mentioned there are three different levels of findings, these aren't findings, these are called other items, these were just some other items that came up in the audit that we, we felt worthy of, of putting in writing and providing to you as a committee for your consideration and your work with management on. I'm not going to read through each of those in detail either, for the sake of time. That is my summary.
Other questions from Ms. Wheeler? Any at all? James.
Yeah, under the, the Management Letter, I saw a recommendation for, regarding disaster recovery.
Yes.
How, how strong a recommendation is that?
Well, it doesn't reach the level of a, a true finding, so it's, I would say, not that strong, but we do, and that's not just necessarily a natural disaster occurring, a tornado coming through, but if there's a technology disaster or something where you lose your data, we just recommend you having a good written backup plan to replace that data quickly so you can continue to function. So, I mean, it's not a high level of priority.
Okay, but it'd be fair to say that in your organization's opinion, that if we suffer the technical disaster at this point, we'd be at risk of losing our financial data?
Yeah, there, there would be risk at losing some of the data.
Other questions? Tony, please go ahead, come on, come on up.
I just want to say, while Hope was, while Hope was still here, that, how great it was to work with Clifton Gunderson, and I just wanted to publicly thank Hope Wheeler and everyone who's here with the staff. The audit process this year was phenomenal, and a lot of the, the processes, the, the surveys and things that she was having staff in the county do, were really designed to improve the way we do our business practices, and to improve our internal controls, and I know we're, we're spending a little more money this year, but it is absolutely worth it, we've, we've got a really great audit process in place here, I just really wanted to say that publicly. Thanks.
Anything else for Hope? Steve?
Tony, it's called family excellence, Hope is my niece.
Not marriage. Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to work with the county.
Thank you very much, is there a motion to accept? By Al, second, and by Tom, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries on to budget amendments and transfers, the first one, is an amendment one-one-zero-zero-three, act for four million, six hundred twenty-three thousand, two fifty-three, to establish necessary budget amounts for the nursing home bond refunding, is there a motion for approval? By Brad, second, and by Jane, discussion. Carol?
I wanted to just clarify, the, the bond refunding on this, I know we worked out, but there was a payment plan that would impact on this refunding, does that take this into consideration? That was, you know, exactly what you're trying to say.
You are refunding bonds, which you previously had, for which you have annual debt service, and you will have annual debt service for the new bonds, but when we closed on those bonds, we received this amount of money, and we also had to pay out this amount of money to retire the old bonds. So debt service will be slightly less than it was under the old bonds over the term of the life of the bonds, but that's sort of a separate issue. This is just a budget amendment to acknowledge that you, you conducted, you closed on this sale and you're paying off the old bonds.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. All of us? Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Number two, an amendment one-one-zero-zero-three-six, for three hundred and eighty-three thousand forty dollars to allow for expenditures relative to carryover funds from the Access Initiative federal funds in year one of the project, is there a motion for approval? By Carol, second, and by Pius, discussion. Michael?
Just wondering if we could get a little explanation on this, also wondering if it's going to affect our reception of any federal funds for this? It doesn't look very, it all, I was just...
Nancy Crawford is here from the Donald Ford U. You could probably answer questions. Tracy Parsons is here as well.
These actually are federal funds that were supposed to be spent in the first year, but because the project got a late start, it was supposed to start in October, but we didn't actually receive funds until March or April, and that's when we started hiring staff. We had quite a significant carryover, and we have put in a request. It's been in several months now, and we just checked on it again. And basically, the money is sitting in the fund balance, and we are just waiting for permission to use it.
Is this going to affect reception of second year funds from the Fed?
No.
Okay.
Basically, right now, we are on a month-to-month basis. I do a projection and tell them how much money we need, and they would like to only give it to us after we spend it, but we have told them that that just doesn't work in our situation. So, so far, the State Department has been fairly reasonable about giving us, you know, a little extra money so that we don't hit a situation where we have to shut down.
Any other questions? Nancy, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alan, did you have a quick one? Sorry. Could you use your mic, please?
I've got a good mic, too. Remind me about the co-op portion each year. How does that break out? The intake or funding that has to come from local?
The match.
The match, yes.
Okay. It increases, the first three years, I believe it's 33% match over the total grant, and then it goes up to, is it 100, and then 150, and then 200. So, there will be some significant changes along the way.
Just want to follow up. Where is that, where do you anticipate those funds to come from?
Basically, it comes from different funding that we actually do now for, say, like the PLO programs and a lot of the other programs that are affiliated with Project Access.
Stephanie?
Since Tracy's here, can we get an update on the progress of what's been done since the last time you've been here?
Well, not, not really...
That's not appropriate to ask in order to...
Not really on the agenda.
...give an update to what the funds are?
I, I would, I would like to take a, take a feel from our board before moving forward or something like that. Are people wanting an update at this point? It's a pretty big agenda tonight. I've seen a lot of nodding no's. Sorry. We'll, we'll set up, but maybe at a subsequent meeting, perhaps under another committee, other than finance, if appropriate. Sorry, Tracy. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on the side? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three, a budget amendment 1100037 for $18,000 to cover payroll expenses acquired from the voter registration system out of the clerk's office. Is there a motion for approval? By John, seconded by Al. Discussion. Michael?
Just like the previous budget amendment, since I see the clerks here, I was wondering if you could go into a little further detail on this budget amendment.
Cory, if you don't mind?
Not at all. You had previously authorized a budget amendment to accept about $27,000, $28,000 in grant funds pursuant to our voter registration system. This budget amendment is actually for that exact same amount, giving us the authority to expend it.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fourth item is an amendment 1100040 for $39,502 revenue rebate received for the Perkins Building Light Efficiency retrofit. Is there a motion for approval? By Al, zero seconded. By Carol. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The fifth item is an amendment 110003 for $26,282 to cover benefits for payout from retired employees for the full amount of $38,337.30 of the clerk's office. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Stan, zero seconded. Ask her. Discussion. Carol?
I was just wondering why the proportions were less than what exists at the office.
Please.
We had a little bit of room in our full-time employee line item that we could absorb some of the cost of the retirement benefits that had not been budgeted for. So, the office is absorbing some of the cost, but we couldn't absorb the entire amount.
So, the $26,000 is just the cost of the year?
Yes, correct.
Other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, on to see under the Sheriff's Office, an entertain a motion, an omnibus motion for both items, both related to school resource officers for St. Joe 305, St. Joe 169, Fisher with number one, Prairie Ogden 197, and Tolono District number seven. Is there a motion for approval? By Ron, zero seconded by Steve Mocher. Carol?
I wasn't clear whether the contract was in the packet as to whether the county is paying for this or whether the schools are paying the Sheriff's Department exclusively.
The schools reimburse the Sheriff's Office for the cost of the deputies for the time that these deputies spend in the schools. So, a substantial portion of their salaries is covered by the schools. And this does include a 3% increase, which is what the sheriff anticipated overall personal cost increases would be for this next contract year.
And in the line, the breakout of the percentage of time that was going to be spent in each school district relative to their needs, I believe, is how it's broken out. Al?
Yeah. I just wanted to state my support because as a mentor of the uniform schools, I've had close relationships on occasion with the school's office officers in the city. They do a wonderful job of keeping security and helping out the, any disciplinary problems in the schools. And I think this is an excellent way for the safety of our faculty and the school system.
Other discussion or questions on these items? Hang on, looking around, Carol, to see if anybody else first. Carol?
I just want to follow up a quick. On the contract, I think it's on page 32 to 35, it says partial payment. Is that explaining the partial payment that will be shared by the other institutions behind us?
Right.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under animal control, request for approval of revised animal impound agreement with the city of Champaign. Is there a motion for approval? By Jan, seconded by Al. Is there a discussion? Steve?
Does anybody know how much profit we're going to make off of this deal?
Animal Control is not making a profit off of providing services to the cities and villages for both impound and control services.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under E for IT Director, recommendation for amendment to the schedule of authorized positions. Is there a motion for approval? By Stephanie, zero seconded by Ask her. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. County Administration report. Devin?
Last month's General Corporate Fund revenue projection report is in the packet because we didn't have committee meetings or committee the whole last month, but the updated one for the month ending July 31st is with the, under the green sheet that was at your desk tonight. Basically, we are continuing to look as though we will come in at about 102% of revenue as has been explained before. $400,000 of that is because of an additional payment in rent that was not budgeted from I use for this year. So, overall, about $167,000 above what was budgeted in revenue. The outstanding lines basically remain substantially the same. The sales and income taxes at this point are doing fairly well. So, are the general government fines look like they'll be down a bit this month, but overall, revenue projection looks like it should come in right at about $31.6 million. The actual for fiscal year 2010 was $31.2 million, so that's just a slight improvement over where we ended up fiscal year 2010. Expenditures right now are projecting to come in at about $340,000 under budget. Substantial amount of that is in underspending in personnel, and we do look like we're going to overspend, spend more than what is currently budgeted in medical and professional services, which is primarily services provided to the two jails for medical for the inmates. The bottom line, though, on the summary, which is on page three of that attachment, is that it still looks like we will end this fiscal year based on the projections, about $800,000 positive, which if that occurs, will place us at an ending fund balance of almost 12%. If we subtract out the nursing home loan, then we're at right under 11%. Any questions?
Chris? I just, and somebody's got to thank all the county staff for helping us get to this point. I mean, you know, as one of the, all we hear every day is about all these governmental units that are bankrupt, and I know it hasn't been pleasant for a lot of the folks around here, including ourselves, helping get through this, but certainly, I want to say we appreciate all the efforts that people have made to get our costs under control and deal with the fact that we've, you know, taken in less money than we used to, and I think that credit goes to pretty much everybody we got working for us in the county. So, thank you.
You're here. Others? Al?
I just wish others would follow the example of Champaign County. They'd be in much better shape on a state level and federal level than we are today. They've just got to keep fighting the bullet and keep working towards keeping a balanced budget. It's great.
Budget change report?
It's just updated to show all the changes that you have approved to the budget as of the end of July. And based on the actual budgeted expenditure and revenue, this budget would be at a slight $89,000 deficit. Again, that's not what we're projecting, that's just on paper at this point.
Questions? Harrison, Harrison?
I do not have a report from Harrison Harris this month. I've not received that yet.
Entertained a motion to put the first two on file. By Quiz, seconded by John. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, the Fiscal 2012 County Board Budget Review Schedule and Process. Devin?
Okay. On 51, page 51 of your agenda, just a brief overview of this change in the budget review process and where we are at this point. The process will be that these meetings will occur, and the two board members assigned to each budget will meet with the appropriate department representatives, and I will also be at these meetings. They will be audio recorded so that any board member who wants to hear meetings that they are not assigned to will be able to request the audio recordings of any of the budget reviews as they occur. To assist in your preparation for these budget reviews, we do have a, probably about a 20-minute training. If you're interested in attending one of those training sessions, there's a pink sheet at your desk tonight. If you can, I would just ask you to fill it out and check which session that is scheduled you would be able to attend. Or if you can't attend any of those sessions, please just indicate a time between now and August 19th that would work for you. Or if you don't want to attend a session at all, but would like to receive the materials, just let me know and I will send the materials to you.
The last, the last session is before full board meeting, I believe.
Right.
So, the caucus chairs will have to make note of, of that as it relates to caucus versus when we start the full board meeting. Please?
I understand from this that this is a 30-minute session?
20 to 30 minutes, depending on how many questions there are. I wanted to point out, there is a mistake on the schedule. It's on county, where it says county board, that budget review is supposed to be county board of health. The county board budget will be reviewed with the administrative services budget. They're so closely tied that those just kind of go together, but that will actually be the county board of health, not county board.
Any questions for Devin on the process?
Chris? Devin, I just want to say I appreciate you making the audio tapes available. I know we talked about that as a way for board members who might have an interest in the budget as a whole or in areas that we weren't able to attend to review. I just want to confirm that any materials that are presented by the departments at these sessions will also be available to board members?
Yes, absolutely.
And is that, will those be done electronically or will we get paper? Or will you come to your office to look at those? How do you, will those be available?
You can, you know, we're still putting those documents together, but they could be transmitted to you either electronically or by paper, whichever you would prefer.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this? And no need for action. And so, the, the last item under administrative proposal for contract with Xerox for the lease of digital copiers printers with supply maintenance agreement. Is there a motion for approval by Brad? Is there a second? Aaron? And any discussion or questions for Devin on this? Or Devin, would you like to provide a brief overview?
Well, I, the overview is included in the memorandum in your packet. Basically, this is an opportunity for us to provide some technology for the county clerk, which will certainly enhance his operation as it relates to elections, and it also, at the same time, provides us with the opportunity to renew with Xerox our copier contract under a competitively bid contract pricing solution and gives us an appropriate amount of time to transition. We won't have to suddenly transition all of these copiers in a very brief period of time. We'll be able to take a little bit of time to do it. This is technology that all county departments are familiar with. We are improving the technology that's made available with this contract, so we're enhancing. We will have an additional technical capability with scan to desktop, which will give us greater capability in electronic documents management. And as is stated in the memorandum as well, several departments are either getting upgraded equipment or additional equipment under the terms of this agreement, and we will still be spending less in fiscal year 2012 than we would if we did not move forward with this recommendation at this time.
Questions?
I would also just point out that the contract itself, we did not have in time for the packet, but it is at your desks tonight. It is, it will go to legal tomorrow morning upon your approval tonight to ensure that it's been reviewed by legal before you actually adopt it at the board meeting on August 18th.
Anything for Devin? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, Dan. What does he report?
My report's in your packet tonight. I did want to start by saying that I thought that the outside audit process this year was greatly improved. I thought it was the best outside audit that I've been through since over the years. I judge it by if they put their feet to the fire, that was good on them, you know, if they did a good job. So, we should be very happy with what we got. The extra amount of money we paid, that we got our money's worth. A little bit about real estate. After today, 56.05% of real estate tax has been collected, slightly ahead of where we've been the last 15 or so years, but right along where we should be. That, that represents about $157 million of the $280 million that we're going to collect. General Corporate Fund continues its cash flow to be stable. We are still behind from the state on income tax. Four months, they have not paid us from May through August, which would help nicely, but right now, we're in stable positions from a cash flow standpoint. Not in any trouble of meeting our payroll or our bills, and we'll be able to repay the million dollar loan we got from public safety sales tax in November. I had one extra report in my packet this year, or this month. So, page 69, remember that the nursing home takes out tax anticipation warrants each year, at least they have for the last three years. And this year, they, they got the loan of $856,000, and we, we put into two different warrants. One is due July 15th, which we paid off on June 17th, and one is due September 30th, when we will beat that deadline as well. Just wanted you to know that when we make payments on these, they're tied to what the general, I'm sorry, what the nursing home's real estate tax distribution would be. Whatever money we get in, we then make a payment to the bank on that. So, it's just a report letting you know that it's on schedule, they're doing well. I read the paper, maybe today, I think, that management firms that... I read in the paper, maybe today, I think, that management firms that they were still having cash flow problems. I would concur with that, but I don't think it's serious. One time in July last month, that we did have a situation where they were not able to make their payroll and payrolls, payroll and payrolls at the same time, same time, excuse me. But they pulled back some bills and were able to get that all taken care of. It looks like tomorrow, this week, on Friday, we'll have payroll and accounts payable as well. Looks like they'll be able to do this funding, so nothing to be too concerned about there. They have about $945,000 a month in payroll, to give you an idea. So, if there's any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer them. I'd ask that my report be accepted and placed on file, please.
Any questions for Dan? The motion was made by Steve to accept and place on files, there a second? Steve motion, there is. Carol, anything else on Dan's? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks very much. Next, the auditors, the purchase and not following purchasing policy is on your desk. If there are any questions for Tony? Carol?
The recommendation from the outside auditor really highlighted that this procedure needs to be corrected, not necessarily the question of the auditor, but the question of the county board actually not. Strengthening its own purchasing policies, so we'll put that on policies agenda next month or so. If the recommendation here, which is even a somewhat new regulation, I think this is something we could consider correcting because it's easy to do, it says we noted instances in which invoices were not submitted to the auditor's office on a timely basis. This can result in errors to the year-end by number statements. And if each month we come here, we have another list of purchases not following procedures that we're asked to approve, and we really have no background to really approve them. The reality is, we approved them because it was given to us and was on our desk. But I think this is a good example of how we can work with auditor's office and come up with it, and with Deb's office, to come up with a policy that is enforceable. And so that if people do not turn these in, we may not be paid. And I think that this is part of the process of making sure that we are financially responsible and that we are able to incredibly as a company.
And you know, I think, I was looking at the actual listing here tonight, and several of the 2010 expenditures paid in 2011 are from the nursing home. But if you look at the dollar amounts, it's maybe $100, maybe more than that, whereas two years ago, three years ago, that would have been tens of thousands of dollars. And so, I just raise that point that this is something that the county board and our office have been really hammering departments about for a number of years, and we haven't had success in all areas. But, you know, I was really looking at the nursing home tonight, thinking, wow, we've come a long way on that. And, you know, I'd like to get to the point where we don't see that at all, especially when, you know, it's August, there's not much of 2011 left. But it is something that, you know, we're definitely hammering on with departments and would appreciate working with the county board to get stricter controls on.
Good.
I would just add, too, that on a lot of these that you're seeing from the nursing home, Christie Clinic and Carl Hospital, although the services occurred last summer, I don't know if any of you received billings at home for services from the clinics, but they are very typically six to eight months late. So, we don't have any control. We don't, we don't, there are some of these of which there is no control, but we still owe for the services. I mean, when you receive a bill well after the fiscal year ends, it's still something that we have to present for payment.
Ask her. Microphone.
I was just going to ask, you know, can we tell them? If you don't submit your bill quick enough, we won't pay you. I don't think that'll fly.
I think we need to pay our bills.
I think not only do we need to pay our bills, they do bill quickly. However, there are some practices that we do, even with vendors that I work with currently, if they provide a service for us and we know we have this outstanding invoice, we ensure that we get that payment into them. And we always have a record of the fact that we've gotten service from them and we know how much that service costs. We can do some other things. This is more the internal control issue than anything else, that we need to make sure that whoever are providing and giving the services to us, we've had people give us invoices in '08 for '11. That, that's an internal control that the county needs to deal with, and it does throw off your numbers. Ultimately, Deb and her office has to do a lot more work, and your office has to do a lot more work to catch those.
I mean, I don't know why a vendor wouldn't want to get paid right away, but it happens. I don't.
Alan?
I just, Tony's right. Do you believe that?
Yeah. I'm grabbing on to something. Hold on to something, Tony. Tony's right. I mean, the vendors, if they submit their bills late, there's not much you can do but pay it immediately. But I think more importantly, if Carol's looking for some stronger controls or some direction for department heads or people who are responsible for turning in the bills, once it does get to their desk and it sits there, then that might be something there. And I don't know if that's happening or not. So, to be frank with you, I don't see what we can do as a county board to tell a vendor to pay their bill if they don't get their bill out sooner. I think they've got their own internal problems that are, you know, superseding what we can do for them. I think if there's anything internally that we can speed up passing it from one desk to another, let's do it.
Was, Tony, this is a question more out of curiosity, but we see this list every month, and we see the ones that don't follow. For example, credit card bill paid with receipts, how many of those go through each month?
The vast, vast majority. And the other thing that you'll, you see tonight, or not tonight, at the full board meeting, is the expenditure approval list. And that's the month the county board's signing off on all of the bills that come through that didn't make this list. And that's usually late, $9 million a month, $7 million, $10 million. So, this is an extreme minority of what we deal with.
Because what I'm getting at is, from this, it seems like a problem is always occurring. If there was comparison of what volume actually followed procedure, I would have a better sense of this being a large problem percentage-wise, or if it's, you know, 1% or 5%. 10%.
And this list isn't meant to, you know, be a red flag and my hair on fire screaming there's a problem. This is just something that no department head wants to see the department on this list in front of the county board being questioned about why it isn't on here. And that's why we do it, just so, this is a, one of the tools that encourage departments to follow policy.
Because when it comes before us, we do nothing about it.
You know, I think you'd be surprised. Department heads want to please their county board, it's true.
Diane, then Stephanie.
I have a couple of questions. One, I see a gas gift card that was bought with a credit card without a receipt.
Yes, you do.
That's really crazy. And then next, my other question would be, Head Start had a light installed back in September for $731 from Carter Construction. And I don't know, what kind of light was that, and where's Carter Construction? Is that Kenny Carter out of St. Joe, or is it someplace else? Because I was thinking you'd use somebody local.
All right, Stephanie, then Chris.
Well, Diane kind of touched on what I was thinking also as well. Carol, if you don't turn in, I mean, you shouldn't have a bill without turning in a receipt. There's a way to reprint those receipts. And, you know, we just have to have some responsibility and accountability and to, you know, pay something without a receipt. I think, as far as I'm concerned, I have a report I have to do every month, and I have to have every receipt. I'm responsible enough to get them in. These are the taxpayers' money, you know? And when we're turning in bills with no receipt, I just think it's unacceptable.
Well, and I agree with that. The only place where it really is an issue is when credit cards are used, because it's a Visa bill, and we've got to pay the Visa bill. It's not like there's a vendor that we can say, give us a receipt or else. You know, I can tell you, in this month, and I don't mean to be picking on Access Initiative, but when we first got the vouchers sent over, there were seven from Access Initiative credit card expenses that didn't have receipts. And, you know, our accountants and their accountants and, you know, went and hunted down for the employees. We got all but the one. And so, yeah, it's, everyone agrees that that shouldn't be happening at all, but there's still, especially with credit card bills, there's still a time where you still have to pay the bill. And so, we really do work to avoid it, but there are times where it just gets on here.
Chris? Carter Construction's in Champaign.
Yes.
Stan? I was just going to say on that Visa, I work for HUD and I do corporations, we still have to do a purchase order to back up their charge, so there's a paper trail, and that helped my audit tremendously. And I'm a firm believer, and I brought this up many times before, if there's an employee and they're using it, and they don't get the paperwork in, we ought to have a policy within 30 days, then they just eat it. They just flat out eat it. Because we're not here to babysit people. We know what they want to raise, we know when they're doing the right thing and the wrong thing. But until you have a policy that encourages that, and you've got to quit, you know, playing favors, you've just got to say, this is the way it is, here's how it's going to be, either get your paperwork in. How hard can it be? My gosh, how hard can it be? We all bounce our bank posts, or at least some of us do.
And I can tell you, one of the departments, the person who's in charge of collecting receipts, and it's a, you know, secretarial or, you know, a bookkeeper position, she has a jar, and she says, you know, if you don't have a receipt, you owe her $5. And apparently, that works. Now, you know, I don't have the power of a secretary in one of the departments, but she can make that work.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and just sort of cut this off at this point. I think everyone's made their point sufficiently around purchasing and not following purchasing policy. And so, monthly report, is there a motion to accept and place the two months by Al? Is there a second?
Second.
Who said second? Stan? Any questions for Tony? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Next up, under other business, request waiver of the hiring freeze for a maintenance worker position. Is there a motion for approval that's in your opinion?
So moved.
By Stan, is there a second?
Agreed.
By Ask her. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business? Under Chair's report, I would like to take just a second to acknowledge Kat, her last night here before us, before she goes off to law school. We have been spoiled by her excellence on this board for a long time. And I would just like to thank her on behalf of all of us for her wonderful contributions to the county over the years, and wish her nothing but the best heading into her future. On consent, B1, 3, 4, and 5, D1, E1, F5, and number 8, 1, under that other business, and there is nothing else. Finance, Carol?
I oppose the E1.
It passed unanimously.
I see, I see.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Not E1. And then that mightn't go to the full board? Thanks. That's it.
Policy personnel, appointments, Carol, part of the appointments, this thing will start with A1, county board is your board, you serve Ybald.
I nominate Mr. Gary Maxwell for a place, very sad, to fulfill the rest of his term.
Gary Maxwell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ashby first. Any discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Seeing none. Item A2, appointment of John J. Serves, Assistant Deputy Chair of County Facilities, vacancy due later, subs-reservation. Mr. Ybald?
My nomination is Mr. J. Serves, Deputy.
Mr. Ybald, I can hear you all.
My nomination is Mr. John J. Serves, Assistant Deputy Chair for Facilities.
It's been a second by Mr. Betts. Any discussion on this side? Mr. J., you accept that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Motion carries. Item A3.
Chair, if I may, I'd like to ask, I want a motion to be aligned 321.
38.
35 plus number 37. The reason that it's removed, and I want 38 to be second.
I need separate.
So moved.
Okay, well, I should announce those, so we got my nomination.
I'm sorry, let me correct you. Who seconded it?
Actually, I just asked. I just asked for a consent.
Oh, you're asking for consent? Yes, we have consent to, I want a motion on those.
So, for the Argent, for Water District, Mr. Finn Ostiguer, returning from August 19, 2011 to April 3, 2013. For Sandman Valley Public Water District, from the Golden Card Hill, August 19, 2011 to May 3, 2016. Also, Department of Health to fulfill Mr. Chepka's term to adjournments, sorry, May 3, 2015. And for the Drayton District, all the terms are the same, from September 1st, 2011 to August 3, 2014. Drayton District, Mr. Daniel Allen, Blackwood Slough, LeBrenzere. If I mispronounce these sub-questions, please. Conrad Fisher, Harlan Trotter, Drayton District, 2 Towns God, Danny Al, Drayton District, 10 Towns Ogden, Evan Holes, Plumhead, Robert Parker, Harland Kerr, Blaine Schuber. Schuber. Ken Gkey, Patrick Feedy, Karen Compromised.
Kerr.
That's what the name is. Kerr Compromised, White, Em, Em, Edgus. Edgus. And Longbryt, Brutal, Longman, Yuckin, Lower Big Slough, Lowell Estes, Ocha, Larry Galas, Owl Creek, Dale Ark, Assort, Assalte, Chris Hausman, Assort Slough, Orskrumer, Bird Creek, Stanley Walton, Ralph, Lester Walton, South Fork, Desportman, Sandman and Drummer, Stanley Zer, Thrum Creek, Cecil Hudson, Summerville 1, Floyd Fuster, South Fork, Richard Rice, St. Joseph number 3, Charlie Daley, St. Joseph number 4, Lee Bruland, St. Joseph number 6, Bruce Ray, Thimble Fork, Lo Johnson, Union Drayton District of Stanley Ogden Township, Wes Olson, Union Drayton District number 1, Fallow and Prettman, Robert Crowe, Union Drayton District for the L and Fallow and the Van, Roy Douglas, Union Drayton Drayton District for South Home and Sidney, Robert Reed, West Branch Drayton District, Stanley Walton, Riss Drayton District, Speedy and Perry.
The nominees, there is second for all of those.
Second.
Second by Ms. Alex. Any discussion on these nominations?
Just going to point out that we have a number of very competent auctioneers in Champaign County. We might want to list one of them next time we read that list.
Mr. Ybald?
Protest that!
Seeing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carrying. Mr. Ybald?
Finally, for St. Joe number 5 Drayton District, I nominate Mr. Bruce Ray for this position. However, I also have, with all of that motion, that motion to waive the requirement for permission to own land that district, he doesn't own land that district, I do any of the questions, because nobody that district has stepped forward to accomplish. Therefore, I nominate him, plus I ask a waiver of the motion of property.
This motion is there a second to that?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Connor, any discussion on that? Mr. Michael, Michael Richards, I'm sorry. Mr. J.
Do have a question on that, Mr. Chair. I was under the impression that you had to be a property owner. Is that only way, because there's nobody who applied for this in this case? Or have I been mistaken?
Well, actually, I checked the city attorney, if county board chooses to, they can waive that condition. I blew that. This actually started, it's been going on for years now, probably 12, 13, 14 years or more, this board, like. Mr. Ward, like, was more interested, but all three commissioners are in St. Joseph, four, I believe, and five, they're both small. If you took two together, it's basically the town of St. Joseph. And I know that number five does not...
Five and six.
Is it five and six? Okay. And I know that number five does not levy taxes, so, yeah, I'm just sort of like this.
I have Mr. J., can give us your comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just not comfortable that it's legal, but if he checks with legal, we have to go with that, obviously.
Mr. Connor.
Mr. Mosher, I've...
Oh, Miss Bob.
Those two districts have had the same commissioners for, I don't know how many years, because they're both inside the city limits of St. Joe. For some reason, they've never abolished one of them. Two separate Drayton tile and they've got the same Senate committee. We never did ask. Five have their own and six have their own. It's always been those two together.
All right. Seeing no more discussion, all in favor, the waiver and the appointment?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries. County Administrator.
The vacant positions listing is in your packet for your information. And the second item is a report from the Job Content Evaluation Committee pursuant to your approval last month to send a proposed programmer position for the County Clerk's Office to be classified. That report is in the attachments to the green handout that you have at your desk this evening. I would point out that procedurally, what you're being asked to do here at Policy is adopt the recommendation of the Job Content Evaluation Committee, which provides the classification for this job, for this position, and forward then to the Finance Committee consideration for actually adding this position to the staffing budget and funding it. That will not be done until September, and that will be done in connection with other requests for the fiscal year twelve budget. But in order to be able to present you with that request in September, we need to know exactly what it is that the request is. And this job description and classification provides that information. So, the committee, upon reviewing the information submitted by Mr. Holton and the Position Analysis Questionnaire, which basically defines what the responsibilities of this position would be, recommends that the position be titled Programmer Analyst and be classified by appointments classified in grade range I. And as with all IT positions, a market adjustment for compensation would place the position in grade range J. And information regarding the salary ranges on page seven of the attachment, it would be a minimum of forty thousand dollars a year and a midpoint of fifty thousand dollars a year. Any questions, Mr. Ginti?
So, the position is reported directly to the clerk and not with an IT?
You are not making that decision tonight. All you're doing tonight is adopting what the position is. We will have a recommendation for that for Finance when Finance actually looks at whether or not to add this position to the staffing budget.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Lingan, huh?
Point of question. Why are there so many vacancies for correction deputies?
There's a lot of turnover in that classification, and I believe the sheriff is working on filling most of those vacancies at this point.
Any questions on the clerk's programming position request? I just have one. Will this position was paid prior from grants?
This has never been an official Champaign County position. This request was created as a position. There has been a history where the clerk's office has used temporary staffing to do some of its programming and has paid for it out of the County Clerk's Automation Fund, which partial, parts of that funding have also been from grants.
Any other discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No one's there, motion?
Oh, was there a motion?
Move approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ginti, second by Mr. Kurtz. Oh, we were discussing. Are there any other items to discuss on this issue? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition at all? Motion carries. Thank you. County Clerk, monthly fees report.
Sorry.
It's been moved by Mr. Bats and second by Mr. Lingan. Any questions on the monthly fees report? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Other business, we have a request for a resolution to support an integrated network of Midwest high-speed trains from the Midwest High-Speed Rail Association. Mr. Wyble, he moves a pro, second. Second by Mr. Bats. Mr. Wyble?
I'd like to offer substitute motion. It's on your desk. Light piece of paper. On one side, you'll see that there's a, the original motion involved a lot of changes. On the other side is the near final draft. I also want to point out, I would like to have a paragraph for Booze, that I, paragraph number six, so, which means, whereas Congress did not fund any part of the high-speed rail program yet for FY 2011, to the resolution, I do not want to include that. So my substitute motion is everything on that, on this page, except for that sixth paragraph. And I say, stay.
So, moved by Mr. Wyble, second by Mr. Bats. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Wyble?
What I have here is a draft resolution that just says, "We support the idea to bring high-speed rail to Champaign." It has no deadline on it, so it could have been twenty years, thirty years, ten years. Like Mr. Gordon, who spoke before this body, the public participation, he supports it, but he thinks not yet. Now, well, there's just no deadline on it. Obviously, we're moving forward, it's the number one, like Chris said. Obviously, it doesn't say how we're gonna pay for it. It says that we call on Congress to provide pathways for funding it. In some manner, it says to still take and create partnership with private entities. It specifies that. It's all private? Great! All we know for it. It also doesn't, I know it doesn't include details like Mr. Mosher wants, how to get the tractors across the rail, and his future, I don't know how it connects to other transportation entities. Those are all technical details, which, if we ever come back, we'll be working on the future. All it says is, his interest is a good idea, it's still a legitimate request, it's a US payment of all, and it's just a good idea.
Mr. J.
Well, I respectfully disagree with the chairman. I don't think it's a good idea. I do agree with the speaker earlier that spoke against this tonight. I do not think that we need to send a message that we think it's a great idea with all these unknown factors that's involved in this. I would encourage us not to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Bats.
I favor the resolutions of a broad declaration sentiments. The United States is anywhere from twenty, thirty years behind most of the industrialized world when it comes to high-speed rail. People of Europe, Japan, China, it is widely available, there are ten of us. If we would have taken the attitude that I see frequently in government in the nineteen fifties, then we'd be in the interstate rail system. It wouldn't exist. No one knew all the details of the interstate rail system, how it was gonna work. They knew that it was a good idea, that it would make it possible for people to get across this country, get through cities and around cities. The details got worked out. It is an ongoing process of the interstate rail system, because it will never be complete. I think that is also true of high-speed rail. It is an ongoing process. My own view is I wish when we have a stimulus package a few years ago, that all of the stimulus money, every drop of it, should have gone to high-speed rail, because it is a permanent infrastructure that would, will be here in a hundred years. Much of the stimulus money has been very temporary, it has not created permanent, long-term change and long-term jobs and economic activity. It was well-intentioned, I supported it, but I think spending that money on high-speed rail is permanent, it benefits a national interest, would have been a much more forward-looking approach. It is not too late to do that. This is gonna happen, unfortunately, peacefully. Some areas are going to support it and some are not. Those that are, do not have high-speed rail in the future are going to be left way, way behind. I just think it is very important that we send a message to the community that we believe this is an idea that is worthy of Congress taking further looks at.
Okay, that is a motion, Bats.
This is another case where the devil's in the details and I attended one of the meetings that Champaign City Council, a lot of elected officials went to six or seven months ago, and they came in with a plan, I guess it's a dream, that they wanted to run a train between O'Hare and Champaign. Then they wanted to go down to Tolono and put it on the Norfolk Southern Track and go to Decatur and take it on to Springfield, and then hook it up with the main line from Chicago, which goes through Bloomington and Springfield and on south to St. Louis. The details in that did not include what we're gonna do with all these rural rail crossings. Two hundred miles of track, we're gonna relay a line, a new track on the IC that was torn out twenty years ago, and there was two there. And the cost of these things is just gonna be astronomical for the benefits. I don't see how you're gonna get the ridership, period. And I'm gonna vote no on this or any other thing that comes out of this, as long as we don't know what the costs are and where the money's coming from.
Counting those two, Mr. Richards and Mr. Chris, next.
I want to disagree with some of the emails that we've been getting and some of the opponents tonight. If you're against high-speed rail, don't vote for this, but we're not really talking about the federal budget in this resolution. We're talking about Champaign's economic future. There is nowhere in the state of Illinois that will benefit more from high-speed rail than Champaign. Now, some of this expanded antrax, talking about in here, is already happening. Senator Durbin is taking care of his hometown Springfield with higher speed rail. The Quad Cities, Rockford, are getting new rail. Right now, we are being left out. In fact, we've had to scratch and claw to even get this new, get this official study with the governor signing. He was initially against it. And we, we need to continue to show, as Champaign and Havana have, that if we can continue to get people to take this leap of faith on this, that Champaign is part of the partnership. There's no use coming up with a plan to get route, high-speed rail through Champaign, and you know, you isn't gonna use it and be supportive of it. We, we unfortunately are not on the main line between Chicago and St. Louis. We are a couple hours out of the economic powerhouse of the Midwest. Over what we have is when the Midwest High-Speed Rail did their study a couple years ago, they found that the best way to root a high-speed rail line between Chicago and St. Louis is through Champaign. That is huge for this community. Now, I don't know at the end of the day if these politicians are gonna come up with the money with it, but we at the least need to continue to show that we are supportive of this and continue to hold the governor's feet to the fire, Senator Durbin's feet to the fire, the federal government's feet to the fire on this.
Okay, Mr. Chris, next.
Thank you. Here we are again. Are we, are we gonna build the future for our community or are we gonna go to stay in the past? Are we gonna be stagnant or are we gonna build infrastructure, jobs, economic development? Are we gonna watch while high-speed rails go through Bloomington or Decatur or Springfield while we sit and watch the future go past us? We should be a community that looks for this type of infrastructure, that supports this type of infrastructure, the future of our community, to depend on high-speed rail coming through Champaign. I mean, it's, it's time to look to the future and not be stagnant or stay in the past. This is the kind of thing we need. This is only, Mr. Mosher says he's the devil of the detail. Well, let's find out what the details are. Let's see how many jobs we can create, how much money needs to be spent, who's gonna spend the money? How are we going to fix the situation with agriculture and road crossings? If we say no, we'll never know the answer. All this is, is saying, let's continue to support it until we can see the details, never can make a decision on it. But at least let's discuss it, let's research it, and let's continue looking at it before we tell the world that Champaign County's not interested. Let it go through all the other cities in the Midwest and let us be left out. I think it's just necessary for just to continue the research and the development of this opportunity and see down the road if we have an opportunity to, to even gain having a high-speed rail through Champaign. I'd like to get to Chicago in forty minutes. I do more of that kind of travel. And how many people in Chicago would love to come to the University of Illinois on a forty-minute ride? Or come to our community in a forty-minute ride? We have a very desirable community here. We want to keep up with the rest of the communities in the Midwest, Mr. White. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Burson.
Anyway, using the high-speed rail abroad, knows it's much faster and pleasantier than either driving or flying. It's much more energy efficient. We all talked about wanting to be energy efficient, but here's something that is, and everybody says it's wasteful. It is, it takes the pressure off the road, so you don't have as much road velocity, it's much less energy, and it's a lovely way to travel. They can fill all the trains in Europe, because it's just a delightful way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Lingan, huh? And Mr. James?
I'd like to make a few comments, not so much of the sort that are being made now, but just for a personal basis. Out of my house, three, five trips a year are made from here to Chicago, to Seattle, to Colorado, to New Orleans, wherever. There are three ways of getting there. You can fly, damned inconvenient, very inexpensive, and not all that safe. You can drive, exhausting, very expensive, and quite dangerous. And the current rail system, which is generally blind and given bad news, I can tell you, it's the most comfortable way to go, and if you've got the time, it's the way to go. It's the safest, most comfortable, and if we look at the rest of the world, we see high-speed rail, so-called, spreading all over the world. We're going to have it, we might as well endorse it. It is the future.
Thank you, Mr. Lingan, and Mr. James.
Well, I, for one, I agree with Steve. We've got enough problems with our highways and everything else that we need to maintain without setting up a whole new taxi, gizmo, as I call it. Why does everybody want to get somewhere faster? All you're gonna do is get there and complain that you're poor. And I was always taught that the faster you go, you're gonna get speeding ticket. So, here we all talk and talk, but to me, we ought to be letting that money go back into the workforce, creating jobs for people, fixing what we have. All we do is dream all the time, and our country's falling down around us. I don't understand where everybody thinks this money's coming from, because we're all paying it. And all the money, when I hear all this grand talk about Europe and everywhere else, well, those countries aren't near the size ours are. Plus, their gas is double what ours is, and their taxes are high. We've gotta put the stop on it, and maybe then we can turn it around, but if we keep wanting more and more and more, and faster, 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 and it's crazy, I'm trying to slow down a little bit in my old age, so let's just take a backseat, fix what we have, get a little wind, get a drive done, and then move forward.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thanks.
Mr. J., and then I'm gonna vote this was a very, uh, thank you, Mr. Bats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief.
Thanks.
I'm, I'm a little awed at all of the folks, folks here tonight that's, that's in favor of this live in Champaign, Havana. None of you live in the rural areas. None of you are deprived of the crossing. We don't have a clue how many crossings are gonna close out in the rural areas. And it doesn't make you all any difference, but it makes us out there a lot of difference. The business I'm in, it's important how quickly we can get to our constituencies. If you start closing several, and they're talking about a good many of the, of the current crossings will be closed, they have to be because of the safety issue. There's, the devil is in the details, as Mr. Mosher said, and it isn't all about convenience for Mr. Kurtz to get to, to Chicago. If it takes him a little longer and we can be safer in Champaign County...
If it takes him a little longer and we can be safer in Champaign County, that's what we ought to be thinking about. Thank you.
Okay, I will say that the crossing closing is a concern, but I do see high-speed rail coming. And I'll tell you that what we need in Champaign County is more jobs. And I don't want to be sitting in a position ten years from now, fifteen years from now, and looking back to, you know, the eighteen hundreds when the IC went through Champaign instead of through Urbana. And we can see now what the difference was in that development. We can look back and see that Champaign is roughly double the size of Urbana and business-wise has a lot more capital centered in it than in Urbana. I don't want to look back, you know, ten years from now or fifteen years from now and see a corridor that goes from Chicago to St. Louis through Bloomington and feel like we missed the opportunity to have that corridor running through here and have the jobs, probably high-paying jobs of the companies that will spring up along that corridor. If you look in Chicago and look in the suburbs of Chicago, how companies have grown there, they grow out on the spokes. And those are, those are technology companies, they may be smaller, you know, there's some manufacturing, but not very many. But those are high-paying jobs. And if we make this go through Champaign County rather than going through Bloomington, we will have that opportunity, we will have those jobs. And those, and the taxes that those jobs will be paying will be supporting what we're doing here in Champaign County in the future. And all you have to do is look to the past to see what does we need in the future.
I'm going to take comments from those who haven't spoken on this issue. And then I'm going to ask us by a show of hands who support the request for the resolution and support this. So I have Ms. Anderson next, Ms. Holmfield, and then Mr. Alex.
Just briefly, I do support the idea. I took the bull train in Japan in nineteen seventy, went from Tokyo to Tokyo in less than two hours, two and a half hours. Maybe at this age, I have the luxury of having more time, don't have to get to Chicago as quick as I. But a lot of people that are in business would appreciate saving their time if they have to do a trip to Chicago and it's a part of their business. And I agree with James, because we want to look to the future. We are way behind in this country, considering just kind of time.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Holmfield and then Mr. Alex will take the last comment.
A few points. China currently is uprooting villagers that have lived on their properties, that have been there for generations in order to continue to improve their high-speed rail system. So families are being uprooted generationally that have owned the property to promote progress. So I don't know if I want to compare myself to China. I think the United States is a lot different than China and Japan than any other European country. So for that fact, I don't understand your philosophy. As far as the economic growth, I did speak with someone that owns a company in Chicago and they actually did a study on whether or not we would have economic growth in Champaign and would it actually be something that would be beneficial to have high-speed rail come to our community. And basically, they said, when you compare dollar to dollar, we're not going to, one save time, truly save time, it's about an hour. An hour is all we're going to be saving. As far as promoting jobs while they're laying these tracks, they're temporary jobs, they're not going to be sustained any longer than that. When they do lay these new rail lines, should they do that, they will probably be bringing people into the area and will not be employing our residents of Champaign County thereby promoting Champaign County economy. And I just, I think it's cost prohibitive to support high-speed rail to come into our community. People are going to continue to travel from Chicago to Champaign. If we have high-speed rail here, they're not going to abandon their cars. It's just not going to happen. People traveling from Champaign to Chicago are still going to use their vehicles. And part of the process, or the thought process, is that people will abandon their vehicles, they're not going to use it, they're going to use the high-speed rail. I currently utilize the train system. And there are a lot of times when those trains have few people on them because we are independent and we do like to have our freedoms of driving our vehicle where we want to go. So I just, I don't see the positive effects. And, you know, I did ask Mr. LeHood, I sat in his office and we had discussion on this high-speed rail in two thousand and nine, and he said the project's been on the books for twenty years. For twenty years it's been on the books. And so I just want to know why all of a sudden it's something that we have to look in more earnest. Where are we going to get the money from? And prove to me that we're going to have job growth and an economy boost if we have high-speed rail. I just, I haven't seen any evidence that's going to happen.
Ms. Alex, final comments.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to see, just by show of hands, if you support the resolution for Mr. Wadley Smith for this, would you please raise your hand for high-speed rail's resolution? And who knows, would you please raise your hand? Only one hand, Mr. Jay. All right, we have eleven to ten in support of the resolution. Thank you. Last part on this agenda for us tonight is the chair's report. Excuse me. We have one extension there. The last part of this report is discussion regarding Resolution Number Forty-One Forty-Three, Hotel Motel Tax Revenue and Appropriation. This item was put on the agenda this month for discussion only. So we will have a discussion because I'm interested in us crafting some items in relationship to the hotel motel tax. The resolution came about as a request from Mr. Kurtz. I'd like for us to move forward so we can try to get out of here at eight o'clock. That is my goal. This discussion item, and it will be followed up again, this discussion item is about how we would like to restructure the hotel motel tax revenues and how it should be appropriated. Mr. Nudo has put forth a discussion item and I have discussion items after talking to Mr. Hines, that Hines that was recommended to me by Ms. Petrie. So I'll open the floor for discussion on this item at this point and recognize members who want to speak to this item at this point. Ms. Burks.
Do I understand that Urbana is likely to annex Motel Six and then there won't be anything to fight about?
I think at some point, actually, probably in the pretty near future, they're working on the Central for Olympic Drive, which is part of the discussion. And if that extension is completed, then Motel Six becomes theirs.
Motel Six is a long way from Olympic Drive. It's south of here.
Right, but it would go all the way.
It's south of the interstate.
It is south of the interstate.
So I'm not sure, I don't think.
How would you, well, I guess that's a question of whether it annexed or not.
I think we're talking about speculation while we're managing addicts, that is truly speculation.
Well, I just remember from our Olympic Drive discussion, when they put forth the map to extend all the way to forty-five, it encompassed that area on that map, so it could change.
That map is reflective also.
Certainly, it could change. Any other discussion?
Is that the only one we've got?
We have a bed of breakfast as well.
Certainly, I think that in our packet was provided the revenue list from those two lines.
The revenue is on page sixty-five of tonight's packet in the treasurer's report.
So you can look at the revenue and you can make a determination from that. So, Mr. Nudo and then Mr. Langenhahn.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think from the last discussion that we had when we approved the fifty thousand dollars for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Mr. Alex and several other people had concerns that we would have some way, mechanism, to draw judgment as to whether the money was being spent properly and that we would have some criteria to go forward with those kinds of appropriations. So what I did is, if you look at the ninety-nine resolution, frankly, we haven't done anything with it. We should have been giving money to tourism all along. We didn't do it. Now we've come to the realization that that's what that money's supposed to be used for. It's just that the ninety-nine resolution is obsolete. So what I propose to do, once we pass this, is to take us in the twenty-first century and come up with a mechanism to draw judgment on the appropriation every year and also have a mechanism that if the money isn't there, we would not spend it. In other words, if Motel Six goes and is annexed or whatever, we would, in the next, we would not make the appropriation until the next year when we actually have had the receipts in hand from the prior year. So this just puts forward half of what the current, last five years, I guess it would be, Ms. Bucy, wouldn't you agree, that the amount is? And if you look at the ninety-nine resolution, if you talk about majoring in minors, you would have a committee that was composed of five people that would have some mechanism to appropriate funds of fifteen to thirty thousand dollars to different groups. And if we took Mr. Alex's concession, his concern about seeing if we really got banked for our buck, that, we're talking about really majoring in minors. I think we've got a professional organization that has proven itself, not only county-wide, not only statewide, not only, it's nationwide. Those Convention and Visitors Bureaus are consistently used to attract tourism, sales, taxes, dollars, jobs, those kinds of things. We could allocate all the money, if we wanted to, to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is what I prefer, but I certainly don't want this body to spend the remaining fifteen thousand dollars with a committee that's going to then ask that same group the next year to prove to us that the money was worth it. I can just see some organization wanting to run a convention and they're going to want five thousand dollars for that convention. It's a waste of money. You're not getting banked for your buck on this. So all I'm asking that we do is take this resolution, now that we have allocated the money to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, to the next level, and that is to take Mr. Alex's concern and others in this body. Thank you.
Other discussion on this, Mr. Waddle.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the resolution Mr. Nudo referred to pretty much codified what we did last month when we allocated fifty thousand dollars to the budget council in the year. This place, it takes what we did last month and says we can have this in the future. It still doesn't say what we're going to do with the other money beyond fifty thousand dollars. That money's not allocated, except we'll go back to the general fund right now.
Mr. Moser.
In nineteen ninety-two, we had two motels. Park Inn was open. Now it's empty and there wasn't more money than fifteen thousand dollars to deal with when that passed.
Ms. Beth.
I remember when Mr. Flesner was on the board, as does Mr. Moser, when we went the rounds on this stuff back in nineteen ninety-nine. And I remember almost tongue-in-cheek, but almost serious, is that there's so little revenue here and we're going to spend it, but it's so dubious, why don't we just abolish the tax and move on? And I see it again in the same respect, it's a small, limited revenue. I don't think that there's much evidence that we get much banked for the buck. As a county, city smart, I don't think that the county has a lot of benefit from this. I think the property is going to be annexed, and so I don't want to spend too much time on the issue itself, but I wouldn't see a huge problem being really fixed.
Mr. Kurtz.
Well, Mr. Nudo says that we should give it to the twenty-first century, run the high-speed rail past the Motel Six and see if we can bring up the occupation and then tax.
Mr. James.
I'd have to agree with Tom. I said that, I said that in talks, is that, you know, we ought to abolish that tax, give it back to the folks that are spending it. It's not really helping anybody. It was set up for a good thing when it was set up. But, you know, it was set here and we always get these revenue streams. And when I read that, it was supposed to go away sometime in the future for it being used. It'd be nice once in a while for us to give back what we've taken. And I said, Tom, you can write that and I'll sign it.
Mr. Alex.
I was just going to point out, for the sake of discussion, I mean, I think the existing resolution, Number Forty-One Forty-Three, is relatively consistent with what it is that we decided to do. I mean, the priority listed in that resolution is funds should be used to finance the county's membership and/or contributions to existing organizations, these activity directly or indirectly promote tourism, prevent its acquisition, somewhere. Clearly, I think the, you know, the CBB has essentially, you know, stated that as their exact goal. So I think, based on my reading of this resolution, this essentially says that priority should be given to organizations like the CBB to get that money. I would also note that the existing resolution, Forty-One Forty-Three, has a section four which says that in May of each year, the policy committee makes a recommendation as to whether the tax should remain and in fact be repealed. So at the time that this was written, I think it already anticipated the notion that this tax might be sunsetted. So I guess, with the exception that the current ordinance refers to this committee, which was never instantiated, the county board acted in its stead at the last meeting, and with the exception that this doesn't, the existing resolution doesn't specifically have any language about, you know, organizations shall not be renewed unless they provide, you know, an accounting to the county of how the money was, for the previous year was spent. I think what we've got in Forty-One Forty-Three is pretty close to what we actually did. And I'm not sure I would want to have a resolution that, you know, sort of named the recipient of this by name. And Forty-One Forty-Three, I think, is a little preferable in that it gives us some flexibility to, it makes it easier for us to change horses if we find that ours isn't, you know, isn't running.
I would definitely support removing this tax or refunding that ban to the hotels. Motel Six, we can't continue to count on that, so don't be a slumlord. That's number one. If we don't choose to do that, I'm definitely not for giving this money to the CBB. There's no way that they can show us the productivity or the benefits of what happens with what we do. When my constituents ask me, just what does the CBB do for the county, I can't give them an answer. I don't see anything in their webpage or the documents that benefits the county. And the last point is, it's not clear to me why taxpayer money is supporting the CBB instead of those entities who claim the benefit in front of it. Why isn't this a membership organization and people belong to it rather than taxpayer money being used to run this organization? If it's so good and it's so great and so much tourism and so much income for the hotels and restaurants and stuff in the community, then they should be supported. Thank you.
Is there someone else that'd like to speak to this, that haven't spoken?
Can I make a beat? I'm a dog.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I have your permission.
Yes, sir.
All right. It seems to me that we're blowing smoke here. This is a tax that brings in practically no money at all. It was set up originally to come to the rescue of the airport, I believe. It addresses a problem which is pretty much taken care of already by the university. They bring in three conventions for every one that the Visitors Bureau brings in. Why don't we devote our energies to getting something established for the airport like the MTD or the sanitary district, which will actually do something without one of our most glaring deficiencies in dealing with visitors?
This resolution is just like a half a dozen others that's been passed. Twelve, thirteen years ago, we cut, we passed tree-cutting ordinances and we regulated exotic dancers. Those things are still on the books. I don't know why we don't rescind them all.
Well, I'd be in support of rescinding. Well, I'd be, I'd be in support of rescinding.
Go over here.
I want to point out that, I remember Mr. Steve Mooney was the chairman, who signed off my resolution number 9134.
Okay. Yes, sir.
As part of what we're doing tonight in gathering this information, quote on the agenda for September of the over discussion, abolish it, get the tax. That's one of the items.
Certainly. Um, now, let me ask you, I'm speaking to final comments on this particular issue. Mr. Quinze, very first. Mr. Alex.
I just wanted to point out that we've committed the funds sometime, oh wait.
And that's already covered.
And the appropriate time to abolish the tax would be next month, based on the regional participation.
This one? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make one point, which I think is sort of getting lost in the discussion of the seed for key funding. In a way, the county does get benefit from tourism in, in excess of the hotel motel tax, in that the county does levy a sales tax, and that sales tax is paid whether you're in Champaign or Havana or out in the county or any other municipality. So, to some extent, I, I had this discussion with the mayor of Havana the other day, the county almost has more of an interest in supporting countywide tourism than either the cities do, because no matter where money is spent on sales taxes, the county gets our, gets our share. So, I think that's something we want to take into account when, when we're saying, well, what, what benefits does the county get if we only get one motel? Well, the benefit we get is that sales tax money, no matter where it's spent, within quarters of Champaign County, we do, we do receive that obligation. Thank you.
Mr. Waddle, final comments. All right. Thank you, Mr. Waddle. I think we can continue with on this issue and come up with. I, I am certainly not in support of naming institution, and I'm also in support of any additional tax. I got an email on my way here from the state level asking me would I support increased sales tax in the state. So, that's the end of my discussion right now. I have another business from us. We have items on consent, and all of the appointments tonight are on consent, and that's it. Thank you.